Good afternoon and welcome to Spokane City Council briefing. Ms. Fister, will you call the role?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Great, thank you. Today, we have three interviews for the Landmarks Commission. And if we could start with Tim Dickerson, who is nominated for the architect position. Come on down. Welcome. Yep, come on up. I normally call it the hot seat, but it's called the podium.
Yeah, thanks.
Welcome and thank you for your interest. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
My name is Tim Dickerson. I am an architect in Spokane. I work for Rice-Fergus Miller out of Bremerton. We just opened our Spokane office three weeks ago on First Avenue. I've been in Spokane since 2007, where I attended WSU Spokane's Architecture Program for my graduate degree. I'm originally from Ohio and got my Bachelor of Architecture from Kent State University. And WSU enticed me to come out here in 2007 to complete my graduate work. And I've worked with several firms here in Spokane, ALSC, Wolf Architectural Group, and NAC, and now I work with Rice-Fergus Miller out of Bremerton, yeah.
I see in your application that you had worked in the Jensen Bird Building.
I have, twice, yes. It is a very, one of the main reasons why I've come to be part of the commission is to hopefully bring something to that project, to Jensen Bird someday, or be at least part of it in some way.
We hope the same thing.
Yeah.
So, in your time in Spokane, what do you think, or what do you see that could be impactful, or what we could be looking at the future for better outcomes for our citizens?
I think walkability and the parks, I believe the park, I mean, I believe what we've done here, what the city has done at Riverfront Park, is an extreme step forward. But I believe that some of our other parks in the city could use some of that same initiative and love. There's some historic parks, specifically Court Lane Park, Mission Park, areas like that, that could be revitalized in some way to make them not only just safer, but more attractive to the citizens.
Thank you. Any questions for Tim? See, it's just the podium, it's not the hot seat. Thank you for your time. Nothing else would require you, Tim, and we'll be reaching out to you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Next up, nominated for the historian position is Dana Bronson. Welcome, Dana.
Hi.
Hi, Dana. I'll ask you to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this position.
Sure, thank you for your time. My name is Dana Bronson. I'm currently the archivist and special collections librarian over at the Spokane Public Library in the Inland Northwest Special Collections, which was formerly known as the Northwest Room, for anyone who's been around for a while. I was born and raised in Spokane, and then moved to Portland, Oregon, where I got my BA in History and English at Lewis and Clark College, and then moved to Boston, where I got my Masters in Library Science with a concentration in archival management, as well as a Masters in History from Simmons School of Library and Information Science. And then I worked for five years at Whitman College in Walla Walla as one of their archivists, before moving back up to Spokane, where all my family still is. So, it's a pleasure to be back.
Okay, who wants to ask the Karen Stradon question? What high school did you go to?
I went to Ferris.
I only say that because my grandkids feel they're, I'm a tiger.
Nice, okay.
It's all good, it's all good. Just looking through your applications, I'm opening up to other council members, I really was impressed with your work you did with the Carl Maxi and spearheading that archive work. And could you tell the rest of the community a little bit what that was?
Sure. So, in October of 2023, I partnered with the Historic Preservation Office, the Northwest Museum of Art and Culture, as well as Eastern Washington University, to host a, what we called a Community Scanning Day, in partnership with the Carl Maxi Center. They were really interested in getting their own kind of digital archive off the ground. So, we brought in scanners and expertise from the community's archivists and historians, and invited members of the community to bring in photographs, objects, memorabilia that represent the Black community here in Spokane. And we were able to digitize them on site, provide participants with a digital scan, and then right now, the public library is hosting that digital archive in partnership with the Carl Maxi Center. And we were able to scan over 500 items that day, so it was a real success.
Any other questions from council members? Well, thank you for stepping up and want to be a part of this, and you'll be hearing from us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much as well. And next, we have Donna Puna-Howley. Did I get it, how close did I get, Donna?
Not too close.
Well, she's interested for the at-large city position, so Donna, pronounce your last name and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Council President Wilkerson, council members, my name is Donna Puna-Howley, and I served in the Army for 27 years and retired in 2013. I was stationed here in Spokane at the Military Entrance Processing Station, that time it was in the Federal Building, in 2001. I fell in love with the city and I decided to come back here once I retired. I'm interested in serving on the commission for a couple different reasons. First of all, I believe in public service. Second of all, I value public participation in the government process. Interested in historic preservation when I bought my house, which was a 1913 bungalow, and started an extensive rehabilitation process, also the historic designation process and the special tax valuation process. It was through these processes that I got to know what the Landmarks Commission does, and I thought it was a great mission, so I decided that I would apply. I've been a member of the Spokane Preservation Advocates for several years, and being a member of the advocates let me glean some of the issues, preservation issues that surround Spokane. I'd love to be a part of the team that not only preserves our history, but also comes up with decisions and recommendations for historic preservations in our area.
Great, thank you. Any questions from council members? Well, thank you for buying a 1913 home, because that's a labor of love.
It is a labor of love.
Yes, that's all I can say, I have one that's 1888, in Brown's edition, so I feel your love and your pain, so.
Yes, thank you.
Well, thank you for stepping up. We look forward to your participation and for your public service, and nothing else will be required, you'll hear from the commission soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you much, and thank all three of you for coming down and sharing your time with us today, we appreciate it. All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to the city administrator.
All right, thank you, Council President, council members. Turning first to the current agenda, I believe we have a proposed amendment from Council President on item number one under Reports, Contracts, and Claims.
Yes, I'll let Mr. Rice speak to this, this is just a cleanup.
It's a cleanup, I understand, I'm not intimately familiar with it, though. And I don't know if Mr. Bird knows more.
The wrong supplemental materials were submitted initially for this item, this corrects that with the correct ones.
Yeah, it was like the wrong vehicle or something, so we had to fix it.
Correct, thank you.
I move to adopt the Wilkerson amendment.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any no's, abstentions, that amendment is passed, thank you.
And still on current agenda, a little further down, under Resolutions and Final Reading ordinances, we have a proposed amendment from Councilmember Zepone.
Ms. Bird, do you speak to that?
It's another technical cleanup, adds some clarification in the whereas clauses, including correcting a file number reference.
I move to adopt the Zepone amendment.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any questions, Councilwoman Bingle?
Melissa, is there anything other than that, is it just like a number was wrong or something?
Actually, there was some substantive changes in the contract that were recommended by legal to make sure that some of the prior obligations continued in effect despite this amendment, so there were some changes by legal.
Can we get a rundown of what those changes are? Because that's news to me.
Yeah, same.
It was, Melissa may know, but I think it was to preserve development obligations that were already in the existing agreement.
Yeah, so, in the resolution specifically, we made three minor changes to the whereas clauses, the sections A, B, and C, to spell out the entire LLC name versus the shortened name in that resolution. And then there was a one minor typo in whereas section E. Previously, it was listed as a application number 22005 to start with, and that should have been Z2005, so minor correction there. And then, on the development agreement side of things, the terms were modified to remove the public streets and park and ride terms, because both of those items had been deemed complete or satisfied by staff some time ago. And so whereas section I was updated to include what had been done to meet those requirements. They have actually received authorization to print and sign their plat as of today, and I already have the plat back ready for city signature, so that is a brand-new update as of today as well.
So, as I understand it, we're not requiring anything extra of them, we've just acknowledged that they've already completed certain steps.
Correct, exactly, yep. So, they did install all public streets as per the standards at the time that they came in, and they acquired the land needed for the park and ride as per the intent of that adjustment with the last development agreement.
Wonderful, yeah, I've been up there a couple times in the last couple of weeks, and it's awesome to see roads and sidewalks and everything like that there, so.
I'm also working on approvals for multiple building permits, so they will be hitting the ground running, we're just not sure that they'll have everything signed and recorded with the county before the current development agreement expires on December 14th, so just a little bit of a timing issue.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any no's, abstentions, that is approved, thank you so much.
All right, I believe that is it for the current agenda, so turning now to the advance agenda. Item number one will be.
Can I get a motion to approve the current agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any no's?
What, what are we?
We're just approving the amendments of the current agenda.
Oh, just adopting?
Well, we've already adopted it.
Approving it, approving it.
Thank you. Everybody say yes.
Sure.
Yes, thank you, on to the advanced agenda.
All righty, item number one will be briefed by Shawna Ernst.
Good afternoon, so this is a purchase of a Leica scanner, which is a laser scanner that creates a 3D point cloud. We use it for collision investigations and crime scene investigations. It lets us collect billions of points within a 30-minute timeframe and lets us get roads reopened more quickly. It's $110,000, we're purchasing it with an extended warranty, so it's valid for five years, and you've already authorized the use of federal forfeiture dollars for this purchase, so this is just moving forward with that, that implementation. Any questions?
Five years or 100,000 miles, is that?
Yeah, exactly.
I do have a question on this, so the purpose of the scanner, is it to help us open roads quicker, is it to help us analyze the scene better, what is it?
Yeah, both, so it allows us to take those accurate measurements down to six millimeters, so that helps us with a collision. It also helps us with a crime scene, we use it a lot in homicide investigations to get really detailed measurements and like a 3D view of the crime scene, and it just frees up a lot of time, it really streamlines the process of getting those incredibly accurate measurements.
Wonderful.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Are other cities already using this?
Yeah, this is pretty common for police departments to use this technology. We've had a Leica scanner since, I think, 2018, and this is our second one, so that we aren't tied up with just one unit. If something goes wrong, then we don't have anything, so this is adding to our inventory.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And next up will be Kyle Arrington, and I believe you're briefing the next two items, correct?
Good afternoon, Madam President, council members. Item number two is a request to approve a five-year value blanket with Pacific Coast Carbon, and this to provide activated pelletized carbon to the plant, CSOs, lift stations, and sewer. Any questions on that one? The third item is a request to approve a contract with Jacobs Engineering for design services and engineering services to reskin our process building at the Riverside Park Water Management Facility. This is for the siding and the roofing of the facility, and this is the design work for that. We have budgeted $550,000 for that, and this just to get us underway after the RFQ process. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Items four, five, and six will be briefed by Peggy Lund.
Good afternoon, City Council President, City Council members. This first item is with Volt Workforce Solutions, this is a contract amendment to the original amendment, which was done last May for an additional $160,000. The reason is we have a whole lot of practice going on in support of our legal case management, and also with the language translation tool that we're currently doing, and so that's what this amendment is for. If there's any questions on that?
Thank you, Peggy.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
What exactly is the role that PMO will be playing?
There's a couple different projects there, but one of the primary ones is with the replacement on the online arbitration tool, the OLR. It's being replaced by Eception, which was a different contract, I think it was about three or four months ago that we signed off on that one. So, we have a project manager from the PMO managing that, Sarah Hoverson, I think she's probably briefed here before.
So, is the language piece a separate?
Separate, that's being conducted by Josh Blunton's team on the web services, so it's kind of a joint. Typically, we have one, probably contractor a year, this year, we kind of picked it up the pace, so that's why we've gone above what we needed to do, so we're forecasting $160,000 to reach to the end of this amendment.
Thank you.
Okay. The second contract is, it's a contract renewal two of three with Infinite Innovations. This is also similar to a Volt-type contract, we do contract work with them on specifically developmental work with our applications, and this company also works with the PMO and the legal case management team. Then the third contract is for PM Web, this is our capital project management solution. This is a one-year renewal from February 1 through January 31, 2026, for a total cost of $105,000. This is slightly reduced from last year's contract due to a reduction on a couple different licenses within the PM Web software, so that's why the price has gone down this year. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Peggy. Item seven will be briefed by Lance Romaine.
Good afternoon, Council President, council. This request is for a contract to transition our voice telephone services, our plain-old telephone lines away from CenturyLink to Granite Telecommunications. The transition at the end of the CenturyLink contract to Granite will save us 20% per line across the city for a total savings of just under $29,000 per year, first year. And that's it, are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Lance. Item eight will be briefed by Dan Wardell.
Good afternoon, Council President, council members. This line item is for our logarithm management tool, Software House International, the company we use to do monitoring and maintenance of this environment, all of our critical logs and systems come into this, this is a renewal for this, we've had this for the past few years, and it has proved to be a very valuable service for the city.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Big shout-out to the IT department, thank you all.
Yeah, the whole office is here.
I know, the whole office is down here, welcome.
All right, items nine and 10 will be briefed by Adam McDaniel.
Council members, item number nine is the federal lobbying services extension for three months, that will get us to March 31, 2025, and then we'll do an RFP process for that. Any questions on that one? And the number 10 is the one-year extension for Spokane Arts as well, and that will give us enough time to do some evaluation process on what can be done potentially in-house.
Councilwoman Bingle?
Yeah, what's the dollar amount on that?
Oh, it's 33% of the admissions tax, so I'll have to go back and look, but I'll get you the.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, the next two items, 11 and 12, will be briefed by Rick Giddings.
Good afternoon, council. Item 11 is a contract amendment with Cummins, we're going to add $300,000 to our 2024 expenditures. Cummins has earned a bigger share of the pie basically by prioritizing city work and providing us good value with our heavy-duty vehicle repairs. The expenditures will be funded by removing encumbrances from a couple of other contracts. Their total yearly expenditure will be, will go up to 500,000. Any questions on that one? And item 12 is a contract with Valence Critical Technologies for Backup Vehicle Commissioning. This is going to be a contract not to exceed $75,000 per year for a term of five years, starting in 2025, total contract value 375,000. Any questions on that one?
Just the backup commissioning, just of which vehicles?
All vehicles.
All the vehicles.
Yeah, so we've used them in the past, we've used them sparingly, it's important to have a backup for our own people that do this type of work in case we have people leave, or we get a backup of vehicles, and so we've used, we've had a contract similar to this for the last five years. But yeah, typically, police vehicles is what we, what we'll normally put through there, but we can put anything through it.
And they're local, or do we send these vehicles out?
They're local, yeah, they're here in town.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Items 13 and 14 will be briefed by Jason Nikonski.
Good afternoon, Mr. Scott, Council President, council members. Item 13 is a extension, renewal for our services on-call unit price contract for fire extinguishers that all departments have access to use, and that's just to maintain compliance with all of our statutory requirements for safety. Any questions on that one? Item 14 is our new, we just recently did RFP, our invitation to bid for on-call unit price for arborists, so again, that's for all departments that need to have access to an arborist to take care of any trees around the property. Any questions there? Great, thank you.
And while you're here, can we jump ahead to first reading ordinances and knock out your ordinance, C36627?
Sure, yeah, this is, we briefed this at FNA Committee last week, so this is the updates to Spokane Municipal Code with regards to the small works rosters updates to comply with the new state legislation that passed in July 20, or passed, became effective in July 1, 2024, so. Any follow-up questions on that one?
I have some, I'll get with you later.
You have my number.
Thanks, Jason. Back to item number 15, briefed by Dan Buller.
Good afternoon, and item 15 is a proposed contract with Parametrics for Design of Fish Lake Trail Phase Two. You may recall, last week I was up here talking about an amendment to Phase One of that project. This project has a proposed design budget of $530,000 plus a 10% administrative reserve for a fairly complicated project due to a variety of retaining walls and that sort of thing. Design is slated for 2025 with construction planned for '26, although construction Design is slated for 2025 with construction planned for '26, although construction funding has not yet been secured. This design contract is mostly grant-funded.
Yeah, sorry. And and so half a million for design feels like a lot to me.
Feels like a lot to me, and that was down because I knocked them down and pressed. And I'd be happy to discuss the details. Part of the issue, there's three, there's three issues. There's cultural issues, because we're right next to the the creek, LeToa Creek there, so that's driving up costs. We have DVE thing that has driven up costs because we have to use out-of-town consultants. And the other.
What was that acronym you just used, DVE?
DVE, disadvantaged business enterprise, there's an 18% requirement.
Okay.
And then there's a bunch of retaining walls, because if you think of where Government Way is, it's way up here, and LeToa Creek is way down here, so there's a bunch of this that has to then get worked around. The cultural stuff that we don't exactly know, cultural stuff meaning potentially buried Native American things, where we don't exactly know where they are, so we're going to dig, see if we can route the trail here, dig, see if we can route the trail here, dig with people monitoring so that makes sure you don't run into things. But I agree, it is is high.
Okay. How how much, sorry, one last question. How much of the of the 530 is grant-funded?
75%.
75%.
Yeah, just, I mean, with with that level of, for the the cost of design, do you have any estimates or expectations on what the cost of implementation ultimately will be?
It'll, it's in the $3, $4 million range.
And are we expecting grants will pay for a big portion of that?
On Phase One, the grants is also 75, 80% on the construction side. So that was, if you remember, for last week on Phase One, we have grant and loan, but we were pushing it off until October when we could apply for, to make it essentially all grant. And so we'll probably wait for that to happen for Phase Two. So ideally, both Phase One and Phase Two gets constructed in '26, but if we have to wait for a year to get it more grant funding, we'll probably wait for a year, so it might be '27 before we construct it.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. The next 37 items will be briefed by Dave Steele. I can't count past five.
Your mind. Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmembers. First item on here is a site lease acknowledgement. This is a new site lease agreement. This one is with, I mean, the first one is the Dish Network. This is going on South Thomas Mallon Water Reservoir. This is a new location. Each of these are under a master lease agreement that has been in place that kind of dictates the terms, dictates the conditions of the site leases. So in partnership with the Water Department, we've got the first one there at Thomas Mallon, and then the second one, which is T-Mobile, is down Park Ridge. That one, they're both bringing in about $38,000 a year. These are long-term leases. They kind of start at 10 years, and then there's usually five-year increments, built-in escalators, the whole thing. So any question? Yes, sir.
Yeah, you said it's a part of a master lease. When when will that be up for consideration?
Those are typically 25 years to start, and I know that the the Dish Network one just went into place three, four years ago. They're fairly new to the market.
Okay.
So that's a long, there's a long ways out there for that one.
My only thought here, it's similar to what we've been talking quite a bit about with regards to fiber and conduit, is trying to, you know, really make sure that folks are paying the the market value for for using that.
Yep.
And so I would suggest the same, exact same thing here, is just ensuring that we're getting the the market value for using our infrastructure for this sort of purpose.
Absolutely, and we we typically, I mean, when when it does come up for renewal, the the escalation is usually fairly significant because the market typically moves quicker. In the last five years, what we've seen is a downturn actually, though, as the market has reached saturation, the site locations have been less and less valuable. I mean, not significantly, but a little flatter than they had been climbing, so. Number 18, actually, is there any other questions? Okay. Number 18 is a real estate purchase and sale agreement for the, this is in partnership with the Water Department. We are purchasing a parcel that is adjacent to their Woodridge Water Reservoir. This will allow them to build a second tank in time, but that development, that that housing development has kind of started to really fill in, and so actually grabbing the piece that is directly contiguous with their reservoir was was kind of a high priority for them. This is the appraised value. The property owner had asked for significantly more, but we provided the appraisal and went, this is all, this is all she wrote, folks. And they were willing to do that with the agreement that we would release an easement that we actually didn't need for a water main that we didn't end up using, so. Any questions on that item? All right. 19 and 20 are the value blanket renewals for Camtech. Camtech provides all of your cards, your badges, your swipe access, our cameras. They manage the backend databases, all those kind of bits and bobs that keeps our doors opening and our doors locking. So this is the value blanket for all the hardware. That's a half million dollars over the next year, and this is something that all the various departments can tap into, so it doesn't matter which department you are, you need new cards, you need new doors added, they use this contract. Number 20 is the labor portion of that contract. This is very similar to a lot of the masters we do where there is a labor and a parts piece. So again, that's a $300,000 extension for one year. This just means that when you call them, they can actually install the parts that you bought, so. And then the final item is the snow and ice removal. The Facilities Department manages this contract for the intermodal facility, the City Hall, and the Public Defenders and Prosecutors Building. This gets us all the landscaping and snow and ice removal for one year, so. Any questions? All right, you're free to go.
Thanks, Dave. Item 22, Carl Granrath.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Just real quick, I don't think I've met some of you. I have had the pleasure of meeting some of you, but I'm Carl Granrath. I'm the city's hearing examiner. So boiled boiled down, we're essentially requesting to increase the rates that myself and my legal assistant charge. Looking into it, fees haven't been raised for our services since 2012, or that's when the current rates were set in place. So taking a look at it, we worked with legal and came up with a modest increase to our fees for our interlocal agreements with municipalities that we provide services for as well. So that's an nuts and bolts, but please, any questions?
I mean, for, and I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, this, the 125 to 150 seems low to me. Is that, is that low?
It's a modest increase. I guess I can speak more in general. You know, we want to keep our rates reasonable, especially considering we're providing services for some of the smaller municipalities with more realistic, you know, smaller budgets.
Right.
So in comparison to, say, private, private practice hearing examiners who provide contract services, I would say it's a little bit lower, but maybe on the lower end, you know, maybe one standard deviation below the mean, let's say. Compared to the West Side, it's a very cheap rate, but I think it's a, I think 150 an hour, which is what we're proposing for most of the municipalities. If you looked, we're also proposing to 175 for Spokane Valley, based on larger projects, more complex applications, so.
I I'll probably have some follow-up questions on this, because, you know, I totally get it that we want to be reasonable, but there's also, you know, a cost for us doing business and want to make sure that that is properly recouped in our in our own budgets. And so, yeah, I'll I'll shoot you an email or something.
Absolutely.
Cool, thanks, Carl.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. It's going to be the same question I asked, is that the real cost of doing business, respecting our sister cities close by, but that is a challenge for us. And so we have the capacity to do our own hearing and support, provide the support for all these other municipalities without our citizens having to wait.
Absolutely, and I will say, I do think that at the proposed rates, we are being reasonably paid for the services that we provide. And you'll notice that for the legal assistant, we, that's a $30 or $35 an hour increase for Spokane Valley. So the, her rate is coming up with, up to like a, more, more in line with legal assistants or, you know, more advanced process. And she's, she's definitely worth the, that hourly rate. So that, we we bumped that one up a lot to to be more in line with the work that she does do on these applications.
And again, we have the capacity to provide quality service to all these municipalities and the city of Spokane.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Item number 23 will be briefed by Jackie McConnell.
Good afternoon, Council. This is the contract with CJTC for doing their Northeast Regional Basic Law Enforcement Academy for 2025 and 2026. I've been going back and forth with them. We've gone through several renditions of this. Legal has approved it. It's still draft. I don't anticipate it changing much, if at all. It is for reimbursement, about $750,000 a year, because that includes salaries as well and some reimbursement for time spent for us doing instruction at the academy, in addition to some facilities charges that we get from them.
Jackie, how large is the class, how, what is the class capacity when we do the training service? Or how many people do we put through this particular, how many will people will be served by this amount of money?
So we run currently three Blias a year. We don't anticipate that changing, and there's usually 30 people per class. Through this agreement, Spokane PD is given 10 slots, and so, and if we don't fill them, they just give those to other agencies. So we're doing a huge service for the surrounding law enforcement agencies as well, in in addition for us just being able to have the academy here.
Any questions for Jackie? Which is why it's so important to get that academy built.
Yes, ma'am.
The new one, so we can provide better services for all of our incoming law enforcement people, so.
Yes, ma'am.
We're on it, we're on it.
Thank you, and thank you very much for your support on that.
All right, next up, AC McNabb for items 24 and 26.
Good afternoon, Council President, City Council. Item 24 is an amendment to the second year of a two-year agreement with WASPIC as a subrecipient through the Spokane County Sheriff's Office for our mental health grant. Earlier last year, they amended it to where we could add two more FTEs, and they're doing the same thing for this year.
Any questions?
All right, moving right along. We had originally contracted as the sole, as the primary recipient of the Firearms Technical Assistance Program, federal grant, with the Spokane Regional Domestic Violence Coalition as the subrecipient and site coordinator. There has been a staffing change at that organization, and the YWCA has agreed to take over that work, so we're reallocating those funds as a subrecipient to the YWCA.
Chief, you want to just give us a little understanding of what this really is?
Yeah, it's, I think it's more complicated with the terms than it actually is. So what this is, is they're trying to reduce homicides and injuries with firearms related to domestic violence, and they're doing that through education. They train officers on how to recognize risks in these types of cases and also to facilitate training and overtime for our officers to go out and do firearm recoveries where the judiciary has issued a restriction for a particular offender to have a firearm.
Thank you. The acronyms are throwing me off.
Yeah, they're crazy, I tell you.
All right, thank you.
All right, going back to item 25, Lyndon Smithson.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for having me. This originally is a contract amendment for outside counsel Brian Cave Layton-Paisner. This is on our ACLU case that the city was served with a couple months ago. We are going to ask to defer this until the 1st of next year due to budgetary issues, but also there really isn't any work that's going to be going into this case in the next month or so. So we're just asking to defer it to the first council meeting for next, of next year.
Councilman McCattart?
Yeah, I I will so move deferral till the 1st Monday of the new year.
I think that's January 6. It's been moved to 2nd, and all those in favor of deferral, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any noes, absentees, that is, thank you, Lyndon.
Thanks, Lyndon. Item 27 will be briefed by Lance Dahl.
Good afternoon. You get the third string here today. Sorry, chief's out of, chief's out of town. This is our standard Target Solutions renewal, annual contract renewal for our Target Solutions. It's our online training program and platform. It tracks our WAC requirements. It's used for EMT, paramedics, fire. It gets our reports out for our WSRB surveys and that type of stuff on our training, so it's our main, main online training platform.
Any questions?
Thanks.
Thanks, Lance. All right, moving now to SBOs. The first several will be briefed by Jessica Stratten. How about all of them? All of them will be briefed by Jessica.
So this is it. This is what we've all been waiting for. These are the last SBOs of budget year 2024, as briefed last week at FNA Committee. These five just right-size each one of the identified funds to make sure that they don't end the year over budget.
Councilman McCattart?
I'm just curious, if if something were to happen in in the numbers for period 13, and we, the the numbers didn't align, and we actually had a deficit for '24, how how would we address that?
We don't. So actually, this does happen, and that's why we estimate it to the best of our ability. But if it turns into a deficit, turns into a deficit, hopefully next budget year corrects it.
So it just sort of encumbers itself into the biennial?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Okay.
And as long as you're here, Jessica, is there anything we need to talk about with regard to ordinance C 36626?
So that is the biennial budget ordinance, as it represents what the mayor proposed, but of course, we are currently awaiting your budget adjustments.
Thank you. I apologize for missing this earlier, Rick. Is there anything we need to do with regard to the first resolution?
Just, just need to brief it. This is a sole source resolution and contract with SWS Equipment for Maintenance and Repair of Specialty Equipment from Labrie, Scorpion, Curb Tender, and Sewer Equipment. Solidway Systems Equipment is the only local authorized supplier for parts and service for these, these brands. We use these as garbage truck bodies and specialty equipment. Contract not to exceed $1 million per year for a five-year term starting 2025. Any questions on that? Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Sorry to make you wait longer. Next, we have Eric Paulson. Completely not caught off guard by that.
Sure I was. My apologies. Hello, Council and City Administrator. You were briefed on these recommendations from your legislative team last Monday. They are recommended priorities for the upcoming legislative session in Olympia that starts on January 13th and is scheduled for 105 days, so we're ready to roll up our sleeves and get to work on these issues that are important to the city. Do you have any questions for me today? Yes, Council President?
Mr. Paulson, just, and I asked you this earlier, since it's a long session, what's our ability to really pivot if some other issue comes up that really wasn't on our radar early on? I know we've done that in the past. I don't know what that would be, but.
Thank you, yeah. Our our process is designed so that items can be added and subtracted at any time. Any of you want to add something to our agenda, or the mayor, for example, and her team, we can take that up at any time. Priority issues, which you used to know as tier-one issues, require a council action, but a lot of the work we do is to vet issues that that crop up and disappear quickly when bills are defeated, and we do that with our legislative team that was represented by council members, council staff, administration staff, and our lobbyists themselves. So very vibrant, energetic group, and I really, I want to make a point of thanking them for the work they do week in and week out all session long to make sure we stay on top of things. It's a great group.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 117 will be briefed by Michelle Murray.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you very much. This is just Resolution 20240117, giving the administration the ability to move small dollar amounts under 50 the administration the ability to move small dollar amounts under $50,000 to an appropriate line item to ensure that ARPA funds will not go back to treasury. Yes, ma'am.
Michelle, do we have a clear idea of what that number might be?
Not yet. I need to send out an email to the people that have just little tiny amounts left to tell them that as of Monday, once this resolution is passed, I'm sweeping it. Right now, if I had to calculate, if nothing moves, it's about eight grand.
Thank you.
Give or take 20.
I'll take the 20.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Next, we have Jacobi Byrd.
Council President, Council Members, this is the resolution and attachment for board and commission appointments for 2025. It remains unchanged from the version that was presented in committee, meaning that there still needs to be an amendment to fill in committee chairs, vice chairs, and pro tem. So connect with Council President this week, or me, to provide that feedback. Thanks.
If you want more work, let me know.
All right, the next two, I have Chris Wright.
Yes, thank you. I passed out to all of you a chart that reflects the changes on the council rules since the last version you looked at. This version, the changes are highlighted in yellow. The big story on this version, of course, is that legislative meeting days would change to Tuesdays. Briefing sessions would be agenda review sessions with very limited staff reporting, only on council request. And probably the other big item in this is that it would take three council sponsors to move an item out of committee and onto the legislative agenda.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's two glaring issues that have to be addressed and desperately need to be addressed before next Monday. One is moving the day of our meetings to a day that every single council member has known for three years, a particular council member from my district, of course, my district, can't make the meetings. I will let it pause for a second. We are moving our Monday meetings, after 65 years and five months, to the one day of the week that one council member from District 1, not 2 or 3, cannot make the meetings. Is that truly not intentional? Question mark?
Point of order.
Question mark. I am asking the public to consider. And I'm not the one proposing to move meetings to a day in which a council member cannot attend. Secondly, there is also the issue of three council members. Effectively, we are taking away the right of a district, the ability of a district, to be truly represented. If there is an issue that a district needs addressed, they should absolutely have the right to put that item on the agenda to be voted upon. Now, of course, we've done this for five years, or I have, and the indefinite deferral is the way, you know, this goes. But going forward, to change it to three, the effort, the attempt, the, I won't say the word intent, is to silence two individuals who often bring different perspectives and that come from the most challenged part of our community. And so I just want the public to think about what the actions are that are being taken by this council in this proposed list of rules, and how that is going to potentially affect your ability to be represented, how that's going to affect your ability to communicate to council members, advocate for ideas, and get those moved forward. And frankly, and I don't know if there's some expectation that a council member might resign as a result of this, but I will just tell you, we are going to be louder than ever if these are the rules that are imposed, because these are not fair. I believe that there is an ethical question here. I will say that word, ethical.
Point of order.
Ethical. To move a meeting in which a council member cannot attend is unethical.
Point of order.
I challenge the ruling.
Second.
It's been challenged?
And I'll speak to it. I mean, we, I know that people don't want us to question intent because nobody in politics has ever done anything unethical, nothing, definitely nothing like a pardoning of their son like we saw this weekend. You know, that's definitely not crazy, out of bounds for people who are in elected office to do things that are probably with ill intent. And considering the fact that we are going to be making decisions, I think that intent is something that absolutely must be on the table for us to be able to question when it comes to decisions regarding the city. Because again, if we were all angels, listen, I try hard, you know, but there is always, there, because of human condition, there is always moments of weakness, or whatever it is, where it's like, you know what, that probably, the intention there probably wasn't, you know, pure as the, as the snow is white, you know. And so, I would just say that I think this is a ridiculous rule. I think it's, it is a problem for us to not be able to say, "I don't think we're telling the truth," when we say that. "Well, now you're questioning my intent because you're saying that I'm not." Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying. And for us to not be able to challenge that is a, is a real problem.
Thank you, Councilmember Bingo. I will say that my intent was not to silence anybody. When we were doing our research, and last year, when the number of council meetings that were council due, because they were on Mondays, and what a challenge that presented, not only to us, and to the citizens, and to the administration, we just started looking at that. And during research across the state, many municipalities have gone to Tuesday for that very reason. So it was not to silence anyone, and to have more community engagement and opportunity, and the challenge of Mondays. So we are looking at this. It wasn't just about particular district. And I have to say, we signed up for this, and many careers or jobs changed through no fault of anybody's own. It's just meeting the needs of the citizens of our city, and to look at that. So I think it's our due diligence to look at, are we meeting the needs of our citizens? And the best days to do that on. Now, we are elected every four years. May not change this year, but should the whole city be held accountable for one person's ability to serve or not to serve, I would ask that of the citizens of Spokane. If we are meeting your needs, should the needs of one person usurp the needs of an entire city?
Point of order. Are you electioneering in this very moment?
I'm not electioneering. I'm just saying...
Certainly sounds like you're talking about maybe we should not elect one member.
No, I'm just saying that we know the council changes every four years. It does.
Okay, rule on my point of order.
We have a motion on the floor. Can we get a ruling, please?
The ruling was point of order. We, there is a vote to sustain the rule of order.
Mr. Wright, I called a point of order in the middle of that.
Councilmembers opposed call of a point of order first.
That'd be appropriate. So I think you need to rule on the chair's decision regarding her response to the point of order. So what I didn't hear is what you said in response to the point of order. Did you say the gentleman was out of order, or her?
I did not get a chance to say they were out of order. That was, Councilmember Zepone calls out of order. And then, at that point, he calls out of order twice. And then, Councilmember Bingo started speaking, so I did not respond. But I do rule on the point of order, that I did feel Councilmember Bingo was out of order. So now, if you want to rule on my point of order, we can take the vote on that.
I don't think the point of order is on me, but...
The original point of order that you challenged was on you for questioning the motives of a council member.
That was not on me.
That was Councilmember...
It's probably on me.
Wasn't on me, yeah.
Because I used the word ethics.
And it was on Councilmember McCafferty.
So the first point of order was challenging other council members' ethics on...
Oh, that's not what I said. I will challenge that assertion, because that's not what I said.
Well, Councilmember McCafferty, would you make clarity on what you were trying to say at that point?
I said, quote, questionable, it's questionably unethical to make this change.
Questionably unethical, okay. Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, I'll just, I think it's definitely important to discuss, you know, intention versus impact, and have, you know, healthy debate about that. I'll speak to the three sponsors' piece. I mean, I think...
Hang on, we have...
We're working on that.
Okay.
Let's rule. So the chair's rule, it was out of order. All those in favor indicate...
No, no, you have to rule on that.
And I'm ruling that it was out of order.
He was out of order. Then I appeal that decision.
Then he appealed the decision, so now we can go to the vote. All those in favor of the chair's ruling, in favor of the chair's ruling, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes?
No.
Abstentions. Chair rules. Now, Mr. Wright, our parliamentarian. Councilmember Dillon was getting ready to speak.
But I'm calling a point of order now on electioneering.
Yes, I think there was a point of order on electioneering, and I don't know if there was a second, but it doesn't really matter.
Doesn't need a second for a point of order.
So do you have any response to that point of order about electioneering?
My, my...
You just said, you're ruling. Were you out of order or not? Yes or no?
Yes.
You were out of order.
No, I was not out of order. I was making a point.
Okay, that's it.
I was making a point.
Okay, I appeal that.
Can I speak to the point I was making? The point I was just saying, which is a fact, that we have elections every year, and council membership changes. That's the point of fact. If that's not a fact, somebody, please tell me differently.
I will say that you were definitely saying, if one of the council members isn't serving your needs, then maybe there's an election that's coming up. That is clear electioneering.
Councilman...
Or it's called for you to resign.
It is. So I appeal that decision.
I do not, did not say anything about resigning. I did not use the word resign or asking about running. So establish your interpretation, Councilmember Bingo. That was not what I said, but that's what you heard. That's not what I said.
Thankfully, it's recorded.
I may have to vote. He appealed.
So our next step is to vote on what...
On the appeal.
On the appeal.
On the appeal.
I don't know if there was a second for it. So no vote, if there's no second.
I seconded.
Okay, there's a second on the appeal. All those in support of the appeal.
I agree with clarification. Are we voting that, are we voting on whether we think what you said was a problem?
Yes.
So if we vote yes, we would be saying it was a problem?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So all those that are voting yes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those no?
No.
No.
Point of information for our parliamentarian slash policy advisor. With something having been in effect for 65 years, do we have a legal memo that outlines that there are no issues, particularly moving this to the one day a council member is, and is well-known not been able to attend?
Not phrased quite like that. We certainly asked whether there was, the council had the discretion to change the day.
But did we clarify on the conflict that we are intentionally putting in place?
We have not asked it that way, but I can certainly follow up.
I would ask that question, please. I seriously question the legality.
Councilmember Klitschke. Well, I think there's still a question here of whether a person has exhausted all of their remedies to make themselves available for that day. But I think that the point the council president was trying to make was that we're basing our rules on individuals that happen to be sitting in the office right now, rather than what works best for the city in perpetuity. I think that's what we're talking about here.
65 years. You don't do that.
Point of order, side conversation.
Well, I would remind folks that there is no pending question here. So any debate is problematic. If there was some kind of question here regarding a particular resolution, whether you wanted to defer it, or amend it, or something, that would be more appropriate for time for debate.
We're discussing this resolution right now, right?
Well, this is on a, yeah, this is on your advanced agenda, but...
We get to discuss on the advanced agenda, the merits of the legislation, correct?
I'm not sure we've ever done that.
We do it all the time, yeah.
You do it on a, in response to a motion. Or a question. I mean, I don't know what the question is that's pending. It's on the advanced agenda. Are you moving to strike it from the advanced agenda, or something like that? But right now, there's no pending question before this body.
Okay.
So I'm just asking, what's the debate about? I understand the concern about the rules, and, you know, that people have opinions on it. I'm just saying that as a matter of procedure, you don't have a question pending before you.
The rules themselves are the substance of this resolution, and we're discussing this resolution. We get to discuss the substance of pending legislation, including first reading ordinances, resolutions, final reading ordinances.
That's not exactly clear in our rules, but, so...
I would say that has been the precedent. We do this regularly, but...
I'm only expressing my view to you as a body. You guys can take whatever, you know, the council president can rule and say, "The debate is appropriate at this time." I'm just telling you that, tactically speaking, there is no question pending right now.
Well, at this point, I'll rule, because I'm sure we will be discussing this again. And so I'm going to ask Mr. Wright if he'd go on to the next resolution that he's briefing.
I appeal that decision. That's the wrong ruling, yeah.
Did you have more to say?
I have things I want to say about this. I mean, I can say a motion to defer it, and then we can debate it.
I know, but that's not the precedent that we set. That's not, those are not the rules by which we...
Well, there is no motion coming, Mr. Wright. Do you want to go on to the next one?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
There, I don't see a motion or a question. Can we move on to the next one, then?
I will move to defer for one week.
To the 16th?
Yeah, to the 16th. But now here, are we only discussing the deferral, or are we discussing the piece of legislation itself?
Anything that's germane to the deferral.
So there's a motion and a second on the floor to defer for one week?
Yeah.
All those in favor of the deferral. Councilmember Bingo.
Now we get to discuss, yeah. Yeah, I think this is a little silly that we have to even go through that. I don't think that's the right ruling, respectfully, Mr. Wright. I don't think that's right, Chair. I don't believe that's the right ruling. I think that we, the precedent is clearly that we get to speak to these issues. And again, I just don't know why we wouldn't want to bring as much light to a potential piece of legislation as possible. The fact that we're not wanting to talk about this, I think, is the point that Councilmember Cathcart was making, was that people who have a dissenting view on this council are not allowed to raise their voice the same way others are, because any challenge to our position will be overruled. A challenge to the majority will be upheld, or, I mean, will be allowed to go. That is a problem. And we see it in the rules, where now three, three are required to take something out of committee. That is not just silencing District 1's voice. That is silencing District 2's, that is silencing District 3's. If they have an issue that has remained solely to their district, and nobody else wants to bring it forward, it is effectively dead, okay? You can say it's not about District 1, right? And whether or not that's true, you can say that. And the problem remains, though, that you can effectively silence the voice of any one district in the city of Spokane, and that's a real problem. Three votes is too many, right? Two votes, in my opinion, is too many. I think one person should be able to bring anything forward. But that was, that was changed before I got onto council. Again, I think that there are a lot of issues with this. Again, I think the duty of mutual respect, I think the way that you've heard the rules wielded tonight are an indication of the way that the majority views the dissenting voice and the minority voice on this council. And whether or not you like what's being said, I think that there is a certain amount of respect that should be shown to a particular office, because we are the elected representatives of our district. You can hate our guts all day long, right? You really can. And, you know, that's your prerogative. But to say that we can't bring something forward is offensive to any one district, right? And the thing that is told to us regularly is like, "Don't worry about it, we got your back. Don't worry about it, we'll represent your district for you. Don't worry about it. There are seats on major transportation boards that are in one that we just discussed." And again, on STA, people like us are not represented in the areas that use it most and need it most. And that kind of stuff really is... Now we get to discuss, yeah. Yeah, I think this is a little silly that we have to even go through that. I don't think that's the right ruling, respectfully, Mr. Wright. I don't think that's right, Chair. I don't believe that's the right ruling. Um, I think that we, the precedent is clearly that we get to speak to these issues. And again, I, I just don't know why we wouldn't want to bring as much light to a potential piece of legislation as possible. The fact that we're not wanting to talk about this, I think, is the point that Councilmember Cathcart was making, was that people who have a dissenting view on this council are not allowed to raise their voice the same way others are, because any challenge to our position will be overruled. A challenge to the majority will be upheld, or, I mean, will, will be allowed to go. That is a problem. And we see it in the rules, where now three, three are required to take something out of committee. That is not just silencing District One's voice. That is silencing District Two's, that is silencing District Three's. If they have an issue that is germane solely to their district, and nobody else wants to bring it forward, it is effectively dead. Okay? You can say it's not about, uh, District One, right? And whether or not that's true, you can say that. And the, the problem remains, though, that you can effectively silence the voice of any one district in the city of Spokane, and that's a real problem. Three votes is too many, right? Two votes, in my opinion, is too many. I think one person should be able to bring anything forward. Uh, but that was, that was changed before I got onto council. Um, again, I think that, uh, there are a lot of issues with this. Again, I think the duty of mutual respect, I think the way that you've, uh, heard the, you, the rules wielded tonight, um, are, are, are an indication of the way that the, the majority views the dissenting voice and the minority voice on this council. And whether or not you like what's being said, I think that there is a certain amount of respect that should be shown to a particular office, because we are the elected representatives of our district. You can hate our guts all day long, right? You really can. And, you know, that's your prerogative. But to say that we can't bring something forward is offensive to any one district, right? And, uh, the thing that is told to us regularly is like, "Don't worry about it, we got your back. Don't worry about it, we'll represent your district for you. Don't worry about it, there are seats on major transportation boards that are in one that we just discussed." And again, on STA, people like us are not represented, uh, in the areas that, that use it most and need it most. And that kind of stuff really is offensive, if not to the individuals involved, because, you know, again, it is what it is. But it's not so much that it's offensive to myself or Councilmember Cathcart. It's offensive to the people who put us here, because whether or not you like us, they didn't choose potentially the people that you would have wanted. They didn't choose the people that you supported in elections against myself and Councilmember Cathcart. They chose us. And for you to say, "You don't get to speak on this," I mean, I don't, I don't know what other way to read it. You say, "Don't question my intent." What other way is there to read it? And if somebody wants to answer that, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll hear it, right? Like, I hear what you're saying on Tuesdays. There's been absolutely zero, uh, public outreach on this. We haven't done any town halls in the ways that we did that. And we're not just talking about changing days for particular council members. We're talking about people who appreciate putting their, putting their input on this, and having to reorient, or city staff, again, having to reorient, or whatever it is. There is a lot that comes with changing the day of a, of a council day. When it's been this way for 60-plus years. It's been this way for a very, very, very long time. Keep in mind, Spokane is not all that old. You're talking half of Spokane's life. It has been on Monday night. I mean, entire generations of people. People have great grandkids now, and the meeting has always been on Monday for them. And so when you're making a significant change like this, it seems to be willy-nilly, sorry if I'm questioning intent there, it seems like it's just a little willy-nilly to say that it's going to be on this day. And again, the other problem with this was, we could do it on a Wednesday. Why don't we want a Wednesday? We could do it on a Thursday. Why don't we want to do it on a Thursday? We could do it on a Friday. Why don't we want to do it on a Friday? And the response I got to this was, "Well, you know, Jonathan, there are boards and commissions that we don't want to miss on a Thursday," right? STA's on a Thursday, and we can't let Al French say whatever he wants to say, and we don't have a response. Well, we can't do Wednesday because SRTC might be on this day, and we can't allow people to not be here. And well, Fridays, we won't, we don't want to do Fridays, because, well, there's just no real appetite for it. Okay. So because there's no appetite for it, or because people in the majority want to be able to sit in their, on their boards and commissions, we're just going to choose Tuesdays. Well, we don't need to move it from Mondays. There's no pressing reason for us to move it from a Monday. And yet, we're moving it from a Monday to a Tuesday. Everything I see in the rules here, the duty of mutual respect, when it's talking about, "Well, Jonathan, you gotta be nice, you know, can't let people, uh, you know, critique too hard, because that might be offensive," right? You can't critique too hard. All of this in here seems to say, Jonathan, Michael, District One, we don't like what you have to say, and so we're not going to let you say it. I, I really would love to hear another reading of it, but, uh, you know, honestly, there just hasn't been a good, good reason given yet, so.
Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so yeah, I'll just speak again to the, um, the three sponsor piece, um, and, you know, might disagree with you guys, but I like you, just to clear that up. Um, I think part of it is the idea of, well, first of all, we do have, uh, it's very common to have three sponsors on a lot of, uh, different ordinances, um, that I've seen throughout the, the year, um, that I've been here. But also, um, I think it does hopefully, um, motivate more, uh, collaboration, um, looking beyond, uh, just, um, you know, any, any one district, and it definitely, it's a, I think you could say it's an equal opportu, opportunity offender in some ways, but I think there's a lot of, um, continued healthy debate, um, around this idea. Um, but it could have, uh, bigger, uh, impacts, and more positive impacts, uh, citywide. But that's part of the impetus behind it.
Yeah, I'll speak against the deferral, the motion. Um, I think that we can continue to have this conversation, and without going to another council meeting, we can have a week. I think it's important to get this out in front of the public, and that is part of the reason for having it on the agenda tonight, so the public knows about it and, uh, sees it as, uh, an ordinance. And, um, also, one thing about three sponsors, too, is that, um, these rules also allow any one member to bring something to committee. Our current rules require two sponsors to get to committee. So at this point, every single council member can introduce anything that they would like at committee. Um, and then it builds, then you have to start building support, like any other legislative body. In the legislature, a member may not even have their bill ever heard at committee without sponsorship. So I think it's about creating a culture of, uh, reaching out to each other to build a collaboration, instead of, um, not doing that. Uh, as for Tuesdays, it is a, a growing trend across the, the state and the country for Tuesday legislative meetings. The Valley is on Tuesdays, Liberty Lake is on Tuesdays, Tacoma, Seattle. Tuesdays seem to be working more and having talked with community partners. Uh, Monday seems to be, um, an issue for a lot of people, and Tuesdays would work a lot better. So that is the rationale for that one.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I mean, there's a whole lot to say, but speaking to the deferral specifically, um, I don't, the public has no idea what we are talking about, what we're going to be doing with regards to moving the meeting. None. Councilmember Bingo's correct. There has been zero outreach to the community. Whenever we bring something forward, it's always the question, "Well, did you go talk to this group or that group?" But with this, it's just, we'll just do it internally, and frankly, in secret, um, and that will be that. So I am strongly in favor of a deferral, because we need to rework this to fix it. But more so, if you're gonna do what you're doing, you might want to actually tell the public that you're doing it, and not just give them a four weeks' notice, and, "Oh, by the way, if you have concerns, change everything you've planned, because we're on a different day, different schedule now." Where is the outreach? This needs to be deferred to get that addressed, to get it fixed, because the public deserves transparency. I mean, this is an opaque, horrible decision, but it's opaque. So no matter how bad it is, people just don't know until it's imposed upon them. So let's take time, let's defer this whole idea, take time, go out, talk to the public, get input, find out, is Tuesday actually convenient for the public, or is it just convenient for a couple of council members, or is it just inconvenient for one?
Councilmember Bingo.
Yeah, I, I would say the reason why we have three sponsors now is because we made it so, because, uh, we were hearing from staff that they were having difficulty finding sponsors. It was taking time, and so it just became an automatic, the chair and the two vice chairs of the committee that it goes to, they're the automatic sponsors. So we never had three sponsors before this year. It was always two or one before that. Um, uh, you know, but it's, it's three now, because we made it so to make it easier for, uh, for things to come forward. Um, and it wasn't like they agreed to it, it was just they were on it. Now, when it comes to more collaboration, right, I hear you. But tell me how many times you've had an ordinance that was deferred indefinitely just because, right? And when I'll say that is that, respectfully, it's not anywhere close to the amount of times that it happens to us. And so when we talk about more collaboration, really, again, more collaboration is code for, "Those guys need to come closer to where we are, otherwise it's not going to move forward," because, again, five votes on this council does not require collaboration, right? You can do whatever you want. I, that's what we've seen over the last however many years, that there's been a supermajority on this council. And so the more collaboration line, I mean, it's just, again, a hard, hard pill for me to swallow, when, again, people on this council do not have to collaborate with District One at all. It can just happen, right? And so the more collaboration line is, again, directed at District One, directed at Michael and I, to say, "You have to come closer to us, otherwise it's never moving forward." Uh, and when it comes to public output, we are literally going to be considering a deferral, um, of DNR transfer today, because there hasn't been enough public input. That was the, that was the discussion. It's, the comment period, I think, is still open, but there hasn't been enough comment period, and so we're deferring it today. But, uh, but for this one, and I only said a week just 'cause, because I needed something, but it should be deferred for probably a few months, so that we can get some input on this one. It's going to be such a massive change. And so, uh, again, I just, you can say it all day long, I'm not questioning your intent out loud.
Councilmember Klitsky and Councilmember Navratia.
Okay, so the merits, I, I feel like we're talking about the merits of the, the, the ordinance, or the resolution, and not the merits of the deferral, which, um, I, I don't think we do need to defer. I think most people know pretty quickly whether Mondays are convenient or they are not convenient. And with District 81 having so many school closures on Mondays, and there being so many holidays on Mondays, everybody knows that that's a difficult day to plan on for regular meetings. Everybody already knows that. That's not a super difficult decision. And with District 81 also very frequently now having their teacher, um, collaboration or training days on Mondays, there are a lot of school closures on Mondays. It used to be some of those happened on Fridays. It used to be late start day was on Friday, but now it has moved to Mondays. And I think what it shows us is that reoccurring meetings on both Mondays and Fridays are largely impractical. And so if we want to stop having to cancel meetings and having low attendance on those days, I think we need to change it to a different day. I think we could have a discussion and look at this, a spreadsheet of what commissions and boards are meeting on what days and what the conflicts are, when we discuss Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. But I think Mondays and Fridays are pretty obviously slam-dogged not great days to have our regularly scheduled meetings. And then as far as the, the three sponsors, I think if we're going to talk about the way we've always done things, as if that's a reason to always do it again, the way we always did things for a very long time was the council president was the only person who was able to decide what was going to get on the docket. And if you had, uh, something that you were working on, as a community organizer, I dealt with this a lot, if you had something you were working on, and you had a sponsor on council that wanted to get that on the docket, you still had to jump through a lot of hoops with different council presidents to convince them that your issue was important enough to even get on the docket. We have moved a long way from having one person gatekeep the whole process, and I think we're actually going in a more transparent, more collaborative direction with this. And you're, if you're not able to get three sponsors on something, your legislation is not going to pass anyway. That's just a reality of legislative bodies. It's not a discriminatory situation. That's the way the elections fell out. That's the way things really are. That's reality. You've got to collaborate if you want something to pass. So I think deferring this is probably not a good idea. We have time to discuss the three sponsors issue and the scheduling issue, but this isn't something that we need to do an extensive public process on.
Councilmember Navratia.
I think I'm in support of deferring this. Um, and the reason is, uh, as Councilmember Cathcart said, we want to get the community involved. Although I do hope that we do get the community involved, uh, they're going to be supportive, because there were other issues that we wanted to involve the community, and they have not been supported. So, uh, it's, it would be interesting to see, you know, what the community, uh, says, uh, having meetings on Tuesdays versus Mondays. Uh, I know being out there, uh, on neighborhood council meetings, uh, it, it's been brought up, um, last week, and, uh, I also have asked, um, around if, you know, if they prefer Monday or Tuesdays, and they, a lot of people do say Mondays are pretty busy, either with kids or my work, and it's, it's hard for Mondays to, to make it. So, um, they said, we, we heard that maybe Tuesday or Wednesday, and of course, I said, I, we, we don't know yet. That's what we're thinking. Um, as far as if it's changed, and I totally hear, you know, uh, maybe some of us can't change it, but again, it's a job that we sign up for. Uh, I have a full-time job. I have things to do on Tuesdays that are already scheduled, and I have to move them in order to fulfill that, that evening, if it's moved. It's part of the job, unfortunately. It's not silencing anyone, and, you know, with all due respect, I'm just tired of the gaslighting of District One is not being heard, District One is not being this. I could say that also for District Two. I could say that when, you know, um, ordinances were brought up, um, you know, uh, saying that appointments should be, should not be here, that, uh, or should not be, uh, done, that, uh, appointments should be done, uh, or elections. Uh, and it's like, if, if we're gonna be postponing something, or putting a referral on something, make it across the board. But let's not pick and choose. I, I always respect what Councilmember Cathcart and what Council Bingo say. Uh, we might not agree all the time, but it's not silencing anybody.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Last, last comment. I just, you know, the idea of elections and whatnot has been mentioned several times. There was a date certain before the election that all seven of us agreed to. And so to change it midstream is incredibly questionable. Um, and it is a part-time city council. Technically, we're probably, um, you know, 70% of what full-time would be, and there's been opportunities for that to change, either direction, frankly. Um, and whether it be an advisory vote on a, on the ballot several years ago, or the salary review commission activity since, that, that has not been the case. So the, the expectation is still that it is a part-time, and you heard it, you know, there's other members that have full-time jobs and, and other side, uh, businesses that they're operating. And so to change the schedule midstream, particularly when there's only one council member who can, it's, it's just entirely questionable. So you're right, there are elections. There's another one a year from now, and it might be more appropriate to change the date then, so that everybody running knows exactly what, you know, announce it in advance, but that everybody knows on the same page, the same worksheet, "Yes, I can make those meetings. I'm gonna run."
I'll, I'll just make one quick last point, which is the same thing, which is, it is, it, being here, yes, definitely is part of the job. Uh, but again, for decades and decades, it had been on Monday. When we were elected, it was on a Monday. Changing it midstream is, to me, if we're going to change it, changing it next year seems to make more sense, because then all of us, um, if anybody is running for reelection, or if people are running for election, it is something that they can plan on. Changing midterm, to me, seems to be more problematic.
We're gonna move on. I will bring it up at community assembly on Thursday night, so, um, I'll get you some immediate. I, I did bring it up at community assembly. I wrote it last month, and I'll bring it up again. So, uh, Councilor, Councilor, Mr. Wright, on to the next one.
Excuse me, we have a motion on the floor.
So there was a motion and a second to defer for one week. All those in favor of the deferral, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
The deferral fails. Mr. Wright, on to. Resolution 20, 120.
I hope this discussion is a little shorter. Um, there is, um, on the agenda, um, a resolution to request that the mayor extend the current COPS, Community Oriented Policing Contract, which expires in December, um, to extend it a, a few months at a cost of $200,000. That's the resolution. It's on the agenda. Um, there is circulated today, uh, an amendment proposed by council president that would actually shorten the period to three months, and the amount to 125,000. So you'll see that on the agenda next week.
And I will speak to that, and looking, doing some research around the COPS contract. Historically, they have been getting paid by the quarter, so.
Point of order. I don't think there's a motion on the floor.
Okay, thank you. You have a comment? All right, on to the next one.
All right, uh. Yep, so, uh, actually, Chris, could we just, real quick, also have you cover your first reading ordinance?
Sure. This is a companion ordinance to the council rules, uh, change. Um, current, uh, ordinance, uh, Spokane Municipal Code provides that council meetings will be on Mondays. And so this makes a corresponding change, uh, to Tuesdays. It also takes out some extraneous language in the code, excuse me, relating to committees and some other stuff that we don't really need in the code.
Uh, next, we have Matt Boston for ordinance C-36618.
Afternoon, everybody. This is, uh, the ordinance that we were talking about to, um, extend the, uh, the 21% uh, sales tax, uh, through the, uh, the next biennium. Um, actually, just, uh, removing the sunset altogether for, uh, for this point in time. Obviously, as you know, uh, the current administration has, um, along with council, has gone through great lengths of closing that structural gap that, that was inherited in 2024, um, knowing that, uh, the previous administration, uh, put this into place, uh, for a 21, 21% increase to, uh, help subside that structural gap in 2024, 2020, end of 2023 for 2024. Councilmember Bingo, do you have a question?
Is this the right ordinance? Because I see one relating to accounting and grants department.
Oh, am I reading the wrong one?
No, you're reading the right one.
Is this 36, 36?
18.
36618?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, uh.
And then.
Oh, you might have an old agenda.
Yeah, the agenda.
Well, no, we'll go to 36625 next.
Those are first reading.
We're, we're back on resolutions and final reading ordinances. Bottom of the page.
Bottom of page 12.
The December 9th Agenda was first published without the two ordinances. That was a clerical error, and it was republished with, with these two final reading ordinances on it.
Okay.
Uh, so anyways, yes, this is, uh, this is removing the 21% uh, sunset, uh, for 12/31/2024. Questions? Okay. Uh, would you like me to do?
While you're here?
Right. So, uh, this is just a cleanup.